The time now is 6:08 on Wednesday, January 8, 2025. I would like to start the regular meeting and at this time, meeting called to order. So Madame Plug, can you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Winn.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
I'm here.
District 1 Councilwoman Fan West. District 3 Councilmember Nguyen.
Here, here.
District 4 Councilmember Nguyen. Mayor, you have a quorum with District 1 Councilwoman Fan West and District 4 Councilmember Nguyen. Absent.
Thank you. Salute to the flag, supposed to be Councilmember Fan West today, but she is not here at this time, so I ask Councilmember Monzo to take it over for us, to lead us in salute to the flag, and the invocation will be led by Councilmember Mark Nguyen. Please stand.
Please stand.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain, please remain standing. Heavenly Father, as we meet tonight, we ask your divine assistance in conducting our community affairs. There are a variety of issues before this council tonight, some on the agenda officially, others simply weighing upon the minds of those in attendance. Please grant us the insight and ability to truly see both what is right and what is best for the city of Westminster and its citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you to Councilmember Monzo and I'm, now I have to say it, Vice Mayor Monzo. I will go over that later on today, but and also thank you, thanks to Councilmember Mark Nguyen for the invocation. Next is City Attorney and Co. Session Report, if there's any.
There was no close session tonight, so no report.
All right, thank you. Next is Export Communication. Is there anything from the DIAS?
No.
Hearing none, seeing none, so moving on to City Clerk Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The report I would like to present is for members of the community who are still interested in serving on our boards, commissions, or committees. My office is still accepting applications. We are planning on bringing it forward to the City Council at the January 22 meeting, so please get your applications into my office as soon as next week, and that concludes my report.
All right, before we move into City Manager Report, I would like to take this moment to say Happy New Year and thank you for taking your time to be coming out to the meeting. This is the first meeting of the year, and so for the first meeting of the year, you see that we have Adolfo here sitting in for Christine Gordon, because tonight is also a night of swearing in for Supervisor Janet Nguyen, District 1. And she invited us first, but you know, we can't go because we have the meeting, so we ask Councilmember Monzo and Vice Mayor Monzo and I ask if Christine can represent us to go over there with the plaque and with appreciation plaque. And so that's the reason why we have Assistant City Manager Adolfo Azida here to report for us.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure. Ready?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to provide the City Manager Report for this meeting. Coffee with the K-9 is coming up. The City of Westminster Police Department is happy to announce the next Coffee with the Cop. Come meet K-9 Thor, who's actually here tonight, on Wednesday, January 15, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Starbucks located at 14041 Beach Boulevard. Come meet the support dog for Pupachino and Pedal. From the Community Services Department, as we know, our seniors really love to party, and there's a Lunar New Year Lunch that will be celebrated at the Senior Center. They'll be, they'll be hosting a Lunar New Year Lunch on Wednesday, January 29 at 11:30 a.m. Tickets are $5 and can be purchased at the Senior Center. Finally, we have the distinct honor every year of kicking off celebrations in Orange County. The Tet Parade is the largest gathering for a special event at the beginning of every year, and we're very excited about the 2025 Tet Parade. Our highly anticipated Tet Parade is just around the corner, taking place on Saturday, February 1. We're still accepting parade entries and sponsorships. The deadline to submit these applications is January 17, so be sure to submit your applications today. Don't miss out. It's gradually becoming a much more exciting and bigger and greater event every year, and this one is particularly special because of the 50th year anniversary. So for any questions, feel free to contact the Community Services and Recreation Department at 714-895-2860, and that concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Assistant City Manager Adolfo Azida. Also, I would like to ask City Clerk and also Assistant City Manager, do you have any notice from their two councilmembers that they know that we have the meeting tonight?
I, we did receive a text message from Councilmember Nam Quan that he was not going to be able to attend the meeting, and I did receive a phone call from Councilwoman Fan West that she was five minutes, she was running five minutes late.
Oh, okay, so she's going to be here later on, okay. All right, moving on, before we go into the special presentation, I would like to, I would like to take this moment to welcome our two new sworn in as councilmembers for this year. First of all, I want to congratulate Councilman Monzo winning the election and back here for the second time, a second term. And also, we have the newest member, which is Councilmember Mark Nguyen. So let's put, let us put our hands together to welcome them and thank them for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, appreciate that.
And also that if you, if you were at the swearing in event, we had the meeting on that night to elect our Vice Mayor for the, for this year. And congratulations to Councilmember Monzo, now is Vice Mayor Monzo. So let's put our hands together.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, thank you and a happy, I wish, hope that everybody had a nice Christmas and a new year. Welcome back. It's, it was, it seems like a long time since we seen each other, but I'm glad you're all here and I'm excited for a new term and for us to work together, myself being able to work with Mark, Councilmember Mark Nguyen for a second time. We actually were almost sitting where we used to sit before when we were on the Planning Commission, but so nice to work with them again, so thank you all for being here and thank you, Mayor, for your recognition, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark Nguyen. Do you have anything to say to?
First, Happy New Year. Thank you for all the support. It's going to be a great 2025 and a great term. I look forward to working with the rest of the councilmember and the mayor of DIAS and the rest of the citizen. Thank you.
Likewise, I'm looking forward to move the city forward this year. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to go into the special presentation, and we have an introduction of the newest Westminster Police Department K-9, which is Thor. So at this time, I would like to invite the Chief. Chief, would you please come up and introduce your newest member?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to introduce Thor, the Westminster Police Department's first service dog.
Let's put our hand together to welcome Thor. All right.
Thor is a two-and-a-half-year-old Labrador Retriever, and if I must say so myself, a very handsome one.
He is.
He's a fully trained service dog with specialized training in dealing with humans who are under stress. Thor will be utilized to help victims of crimes, witnesses, and actually Police Department members as well, city staff, cope with stress that they see on a daily basis, so he's going to be helping many, many people out. Thor's handler, if you're interested, most people aren't when they see Thor, but I do want to mention Reserve Officer Nunez's. He's Thor's handler, and he has over 21 years of police officer experience, five of which was spent actually as a police canine with an apprehension dog, so he comes to us with a lot of time on and a lot of experience. In addition to that, Officer Nunez is a fully trained peer support member, which means he's got some counseling abilities for members of the public, of course, staff, and police personnel. I now would like to present Thor, in this case, I'm actually going to give it to his handler, but it's Thor's, his official police identification card and his police badge.
So ladies and gentlemen, here is your newest member of Police Department here, Thor.
I know the mayor and City Council also wanted to recognize the Posse Bar, who made this, Posse Bar Foundation that made this possible for us. They raised the money exclusively for this project and to make Thor a reality for this community and for the Police Department, and I know the mayor wanted to show them some recognition.
Sure.
And I'll let you take it from there, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, I know that the owner of the Posse Bar Foundation, Bar is here tonight, and also I would like to take the moment to recognize the Posse Bar Foundation, a nonprofit organization fundraised for the purpose of providing a service dog to the Westminster Police Department. The Posse Bar Foundation raised enough funds to cover all costs for the purchase of Thor, a transservice dog who was presented to the department. And Thor will be utilized for the well-being of community members, department, and city personnel suffering from trauma. So at this time here, I would like to, on behalf of the City Council and city staff, I would like to present the appreciation plaque to Posse Bar Foundation, which I know that you also remember these, the owner of the Posse Bar, which is John Chintao. Would you please come to the podium so that we can present it to you? I also want to invite the councilmen to come down and present this. So here is the certificate of, do we have a microphone here? I think we do. So, as I mentioned earlier, here is a certificate of recognition presented to Posse Bar Foundation for your dedicated effort in providing a service dog to the Westminster Police Department and supporting the well-being of community members, departments, and city personnel suffering from trauma. And it is on this 8th day of January 2025 by the mayor and also City Council, Carlos Monzo as Vice Mayor, District 2, Amy Fan West, Councilmember, District 1, Mark Nguyen, Councilmember, District 3, and Nam Quan Nguyen, Councilmember, District 4. Thank you very much and congratulations. Thank you. Anyone to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. As you can see, a lot of folks who in our city who don't, not just the Posse Bar, but the Posse Bar Foundation, and the people who run it, what an asset they are to our community. This is just one of the example of the many contributions that this foundation has provided for our community and others as well, so thank you very much for what you do for our city and for our Police Department. I mean, greatly appreciate everything you do, so thanks again and congratulations. Thank you.
Any other councilmember?
Thank you guys for all you do, because as people say, a dog is a man's best friend, and it's so totally true, and I know Thor will be a great blessing and a great asset to the city of Westminster and the staff of the city of Westminster and anyone who needs Thor. So we're excited for this new addition to the family of Westminster. Thank you guys for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your generosity and on behalf of the city, thank you so much. I know it will greatly help the citizen of this community.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, here you are.
On behalf of the Posse Bar and the Posse Bar Foundation, thank you very much. Most of everybody here had made some type of donation, so if it wasn't for you guys, we wouldn't have the dog, so thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
I just want to reiterate what John said on behalf of the Posse Bar Foundation, my family, my other board members, we, you know, appreciate the recognition, but at the end of the day, you know, this is for the city and to make sure that the city has the support they need with, you know, not just crime and everything, but with mental health as well, so thank you.
So once again, congratulations to the So once again, congratulations to the Westminster Police Department and also to the resident of the city of Westminster. Thank you very much.
Wait until you smile.
Ready, one, two, three.
All right, thank you. All right. Next is the oral communications and at this time, the oral communication concerning the agenda items only. So with that, I would like to open up for the oral communication. So City Clerk, would you please go ahead and read the instruction into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote, the city council comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time, state your name and city of residence for the record. Our first speaker is Michael Varengia, followed by Camilla Overbeek.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, especially our new council member and our returning council member. Appreciate you being here. Michael Varengia, I'm a 30-year resident of Westminster. My agenda items I'd like to speak about, item 3.4, the adoption of ordinance 2615, rules of decorum. I urge you to have your reading. It may be pulled. I don't know if you're going to discuss anymore about this. I see it's on the consent calendar, but it absolutely has to be done. The shame of it is you're having to force two alleged adults into paying attention to what they were elected for, and that's to represent residents of the city, not for their own aggrandizement to promote themselves or not for them to just be a pain in the backside of everybody else up here on the dais. So hopefully this goes through. Hopefully this will finally have some teeth in it and the city council can get back to running the city, which is what you're all paid for. The other, the other two items, 5.1, sponsor the Midway City Sanitary District Open House. I wholeheartedly agree with that. I went to the last one, it was really, really a nice day. And Councilmember Mark Nguyen and the rest of the board for the sanitary district really put on a great open house. There was lots of people there and it was a lot of fun, especially for the kids. The food obviously was great. That's what everybody else enjoyed. And 5.4, appointments to the Westminster Community Foundation. Hopefully, we can get some more interested people that at least may have something to bring to the table, so to speak, for the foundation. I realize I wouldn't be able to be on that because I don't have those skills, but the city really does need a good foundation. All the years that I worked in Garden Grove, their foundation over there was just outstanding, the things that they were able to accomplish. It's very new for our city and I understand there is, there is a certain learning curve and being able to come up to speed, but hopefully we'll get some new faces on there and maybe they will bring some expertise of what they'd done prior. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Camilla Overbeek, followed by Tim Hogan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Nguyen Fan West. I'm here to speak tonight about item 5.4. I'm currently a board member for the foundation and I find it a little bit disingenuous and irresponsible to have this item on the agenda tonight when, going back to September 11th, 2024, Councilmember Fan West requested a study session regarding the foundation so that things could be revamped and redone and we could become more efficient. And that was set for September 25th and Councilmember Fan West failed to show up. And in doing so, the foundation's hands have been tied. We've not been able to do anything because this council has effectively forgotten about us and has not appointed people. So I would ask that this particular item be moved and tabled until that study session can be completed so that the foundation can move forward or be disbanded, whatever it is, because the community is not being served properly. Currently, 2023 taxes for the foundation have not been filed nor have taxes for the 2024 year. And that's because we don't have a quorum and we cannot have meetings. So until any more individuals are appointed, I think that it's fair to ask that this council be responsible and hear members of the foundation out on how the foundation can best move forward and be effective in what it is that we're trying to accomplish. So with that, I do hope that you will heed this advice and hold the study session before you appoint people. There are issues with bylaws and there are issues with people who are on the board who have zero experience with nonprofits. And it's very important to remember that a nonprofit is not a committee or a commission. There are legally required elements that have to be met. And currently, the foundation is not doing that, nor do many of the people on the foundation have the ability and/or skills to do so. In fact, I think I'm the only one. And as for item 3.4 and decorum, I would just like to point out that your positions here as council members are to be nonpartisan. And I find it highly offensive that there is a council member sitting over there with a Trump flag in front of her. And you can argue, Christian, that it's, you know, First Amendment rights and all of that, but you know damn well that these are supposed to be nonpartisan positions and that absolutely creates a partisan atmosphere in an already divided community. And with that, have a wonderful evening.
Our next speaker is Tim Hogan, followed by Roger Mindrum.
Item 3.4, Rules of Decorum and Civility. Such an odd title, given you council members are adults and your purpose here is the safety and welfare of our community. Of course, the onus doesn't fall evenly upon you all, but even with that in mind, it's hard to comprehend how it got to this point. And given how dire the world is out there is, it's impossible to comprehend when viewed through the eyes of the community, for all we want are simple answers to the travails which assail us. Robert Fulgham published an essay in 1988, which poignantly addressed the issue before us, titled "All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten." It's a somewhat whimsical piece which illustrates the many life lessons we all learn at an early age. Simple guidelines such as be fair, to be fair, we must share, don't hurt people, clean up your own mess. And we learned it all in kindergarten, everything we need to live productive lives, rules to cover love, equality, sane living, all neatly presented in words and examples a simple child can grasp. We just need to remember them. For life is truly simple when viewed in its fundamentals. Study all the guides and principles the great minds have preserved for us and it all boils down to a simple ideal, one found in every known philosophy, expounded upon in every lived religion. From time immemorial to our present hour, one thought remains the bedrock of civilization, the tiller which guides us in our collective journey to enlightened living. Here in the West, its most common phrasing was provided by the Nazarene himself. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. What more do you need to guide these meetings than this simple phrase? For as Rabbi Hillel explained two millennia ago, it is the essence of human action, all else is but interpretation. Or as Robert Fulgham phrased it, it doesn't matter what you say you believe, it's what you do. It's the only thing that matters. And please, above all, do not frame whatever debate you engage in upon this as a battle for freedom of speech. For the rules proposed today only give guidance to following the established rules of order adopted by this governing body decades ago before any of you were alive. Under Robert's Rules of Order, free speech is ensured by giving each of you the opportunity to speak equally on every topic, each in your turn, without interruption. And provided each speaker stays focused on the issue at hand, doesn't get lost in the weeds of irrelevance and remains clear of personal attacks, your right to speech is no more impeded than that of anyone else. It's that simple. We've all known it since we were young tots. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Roger Mindrum, followed by our final speaker, Terry Rains.
Good evening, Roger Mindrum. It's nice to be back. Welcome, Mr. Nguyen. Good things will come this year with you here. Just a few things, I wholeheartedly agree with the speakers before me. Just a few comments regarding the comments from Camilla Overbeek regarding the Community Foundation. The only thing that I've heard or the most things that I've heard about that commission, well, it's not even a commission, it's supposed to be separate from the city, is just chaos and division and nothing really gets done so that the meeting of the present and past members of the foundation to get people together, if those people are willing to come together and give some constructive advice on how to make that better is crucial. Because as far as right now, how much money have they raised? I mean, even the first year, the amount of money that was raised was a majority from tax-paid entities, Westminster School District, the Water Board, the County Water Board, these other entities that are paid by taxpayers. So in the end, taxpayers are paying for it anyways. So where is the real fundraising? So, and the legal aspects, you need to fix all that or otherwise someone's going to get in some big trouble pretty soon. And if you want it to be successful, then make it successful. The other part about the ad hoc committees, I'd like to hear a little bit of a report from those members, one of them's not here, I suppose, but give us a little report on if there's been any progress on those ad hoc committees, meetings. It doesn't seem to be really helpful, it's just fruitful or unfruitful. Anyways, just like give my two cents, keep up the good work or start some new work, good work. Happy New Year.
Our final speaker, Terry Rains.
Welcome to the dais, Councilman Mark Nguyen. I was going to say sorry about the seating, but they got it fixed. You can thank me for the late communications corrections for three items. Item one, thanks WPD for bringing Thor in to meet us tonight. Big thanks to John Gentile's Posse Bar Foundation for their fundraising efforts that made Thor possible. Item 3.1, once again, no real minutes. There are still 13 2024 meeting dates with no minutes, even though a consultant was hired months ago to complete them. Item 3.5, leave it to the county to screw with our FRC funding. Approve this now so we can hopefully lock in funding for the next fiscal year. Item 5.1, Mayor and Councilman Mark Nguyen must recuse yourselves for this one, but thank you for going with my suggestion to start this event at 11:00 AM, not 10:00 AM. Eating a tasty habit hamburger at 10:00 AM is just weird. Plus, many kids' sports events are on Saturday morning, so this is better. Last year, the city sponsored 2,500, so I guess 3,000 is okay for this year, but why wasn't this in the budget already? Item 5.2, yep, there were two embarrassing errors in this maintenance contract. The word maintenance was spelled wrong and pump was spelled pimp. The city must closely approve all legally binding contracts before they're presented. The city attorney has reviewed as to form, yeah, right. Item 5.3, CDBG street improvements. So Amy, are you going to vote no on this and every contract now because you're too dense to understand its standard practice to incorporate contingencies into construction contracts? The community was mad when you voted no on the badly needed. ARPA funded improvements to our museum site and gave that excuse, even though you'd approved many contracts before with the 10% contingency. Oh, and this is funded with CDBG funds, which you also voted no to even accept, idiot. Item 5.4, yes, nine vacancies, not eight, but no appointments should be made now. The entire structure and bylaws must change. The foundation failed due to this council's involvement, appointments and Christians have asked bylaws. Per the IRS website, no financials have been filed yet. The fiscal year '23 postcard and fiscal year '24 long-form filings are delinquent. I suggest forming a community and staff advisory committee, no council, to study and recommend how to restructure the foundation and rewrite the bylaws. I might even volunteer for that. Item 5.5, not much from these ad hocks, so dissolve them. Don't appoint Amy or Nam Quan to anything ever again. Yep, Carlos is on the homeless committee, not Amy since August. Item 3.4, the ordinance, your city attorney opined wasn't even possible, then drafted with errors, some fix, some not. WMC 20460 cited only applies to any person in the audience and Government Code 54953543 cited only applies to members of the public. My ignored suggestions, Section 2B, 3F and 3H, add members of the public. 3C, add staff. 2D, 3D, add city staff and members of the public. E3, strike the presiding officer, may choose in the meeting. Punish the offenders, not staff, other council members and the public. Mend, approve, adopt and enforce this. And we're not about that.
Mayor, that concludes our oral communications for agenda items.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out and expressed your opinions. Now I would like to close the oral communication for agenda items and moving next to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion, followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for the separate action of discussion. Is there a motion to approve or any item to pull?
Can we pull item 3.4 and 3.5 for discussion?
Asking to pull item 3.4 and 3.5 by Councilmember West. Anything else?
Motion to approve the remainder, Mayor.
Second it.
Okay. So we have motion and second to approve except for 3.4, 3.5.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by District 1 Councilwoman Fan West. This is to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3.4 and 3.5 pulled for separate discussion. I'll go to call roll. District 1 Councilwoman Fan West.
Fan West, yes.
District 3 Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
So 3.4, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2615, establishing the city of Westminster rules of decorum and civility from the mayor and city council during the city council meetings. Councilmember West?
Yes. Okay, so 3.4, you know, I read through this and I see a couple of things that I have concern about with A, if you can define what is long period of time, if you can bring clarification to that. And then also, not intentionally meeting entire discussion and vote, how do we verify someone's intention? You know, as we know that people do have, you know, doctor appointments or different meetings that they have to do to emergency and whatnot. So how do you judge someone's intention for missing a meeting? And then C, I guess the audience, if you can define what is the manner of disruptive? So if you can explain that or in detail, what is disruptive? What's an explanation of disruptive? And then the same for D, not intentionally refuse to attend closed session meeting, how do you vet someone's intention? How do you vet someone's intention? So I don't know how you measure that. Now E, also, shall not disrupt meeting. So what is considered disruptive? So if you can verify those before we move forward.
At this time here...
It seems really vague, Mr. Mayor, so I just ask for clarification.
Okay, no, well, it's valid request. It's just that, city attorney, you want to respond to this, or you want me to go respond? I don't mind if I need to respond to these, but I'd like to have you or the city council to take...
I think you want to take them one by one.
Okay, yeah. The first one is, we have to define how long is too long for a person to miss the portion of the meeting? Any council, if you want to...
Yeah, and that isn't, it's not defined specifically. I think the idea here was to establish some general ideas about what's appropriate versus not appropriate. There's two things really being dealt with here. One is just general decorum, what's courteous, you know, that's not, you know, what's courteous, that's not defined either. You know, in one sense, it's, these are just rules to try and have everybody abide by. However, there's also the aspect of being disruptive, and there's a big part of this that deals with what's disruptive, and we do try to define that because that potentially does have more of an enforcement. So you have the side that's trying to appeal to people to act courteously, and then the other side, which is, don't be disruptive, and we try to define that in greater detail.
Okay, is there anything from the Vice Mayor and also the council?
We're on A. So a lot of, on these topics, it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of it is pretty much like common sense and common courtesy, you know? And we're up here, we made a commitment to the community to do our jobs, to serve the community, be up here listening to staff reports, listening to the members of the community when they come out, and they're giving their, either their praises, their grievances, whatever it may be. If one of us, we have to, for instance, use the restroom, common sense and common courtesy is to do it as quickly as possible and get right back here. That's something that's not written, but it's just common knowledge, that's what you do. It's not written in any code section or anything, but it's just common courtesy. Common courtesy, like a courtesy is going in the back, eating, being on the phone, put your feet up on the chair, and watch the meeting from the back. That is not, that's not what it is. So if you're trying to kind of start something by trying to get to the weeds of it, the weeds of it is just common courtesy and common respect. So do whatever you're going to do, do as quickly as possible and get right back here. Those are just common things that you do.
I agree with Vice Mayor Manzo. That's what I have in mind. When you asked the question, what came to my mind is common sense, common sense, common sense. If you attend another meeting and you see that one of the council acting that way, you will tell whether it's, how long is the, how long is the period of time that the person is out of the meeting, when they're supposed to be at the meeting and address the issue or listen to the people who are giving their, you know, their opinions? So at this time, common sense, common sense, common sense is the answer that I have for you. So next one.
I think, I agree with you guys completely. Common sense is very important, and plus, also, Mr. Vice Mayor Monzo talked about we are adults and common courtesy, and I know that all of us are adults, but with this, it seems really vague. It seems like hand-holding, and it's really sad that our city have to do this. And then if you guys want to enforce this, that's fine. I'm okay with rules and regulation if you guys want to do that, but the thing is that it's very vague. So I enjoy, you know, managing our time effectively and, you know, but then with this, I just feel like, to be honest with you, it's more of utilize it for a target in the future of your opponent because it's so vague. I think if you guys want to do this, just say, what's a long period of time? Say 15 minutes, right? Or whatever, put a timeframe. So then, if that's the rule you guys want to follow, we should all, I'm all okay to manage our time effectively and follow rules, and if you guys want to do that, put a timeframe in there so no one can be confused of how long that is. 10 minutes, 15 minutes, whatever it might be, five minutes, whatever you want. So no longer than 10 minutes, or no longer than five minutes. Whatever you want to put in there so that way we can define it. And I'm okay with, you know, rules, having this rule and whatnot, but for this to be so vague, it's really hard to define anything. And to be honest with you, I agree with both you guys, as we are, you know, adults, common courtesy and respect. I just feel like this agenda item, ordinance, is not what the City of Westminster need for structure if we want to improve it. I just feel like, you know, this won't help our meeting. It's more of, kind of like a look-down, you know, of babysitting kindergarten style. So I agree with you guys with respect and courtesy, but this is vague. If you guys want to implement the law and the rule, I'm okay with that, but don't make it vague. Like, tell us the timeframe, what is long?
I got what you're trying to say. But the one sense that you said, I think that I totally agree with you. You said that you enjoy to keep the time moving effectively. That's everything already. If you know how to keep the time effectively, then I can tell that you know how to keep, how to measure the time, how to keep it, whether it's long or not long. So I don't think that we need to specify the time here, but it's another word, common sense, that we expect from the council members to behave or to take their responsibility. So we have that. We can go all along, you know, for the whole night, but at this time, let's move on to the next one.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you on if you want to implement this ordinance, I'm okay with it, but tell us what is long period of time so that way no one can say, you know, there's a timeframe, so that way we cannot exceed that. So it's not vague, it's obvious, you know? So if you want to do that, I'm all okay for it, to say that, you know? Five minutes, whatever, 10 minutes, whatever you want, you know? I'm okay with that.
We are not, like I said, we are not doing that because let's say five minutes, we put in five minutes, and you go, you know, you have to run your errands and, you know, there and there, then I'm not going to tie you into the five minutes. I understand if you have something that you have to do, that is your prerogative, but at the same time, I'm not going to tie you for the five minutes, okay? It's just that it's courtesy that you have to, you have to take, as the council member.
Right, and I agree with you, you know, as, I guess I'm the only woman here.
All right, so let me move on, let me move on. If there's anything else?
Yes, may I finish what you just said? I agree with you completely, and of course, we have biological, you know, things certain of us have to go, or medical condition or whatever, but the thing is that, you know, I think it factor into when is a long period of time, and I think, you know...
You're still going back to defining the term, and I said that for me, I don't think that we need to define the term, and if we continue to argue on this, you know, we have, at one point, we have to move on. What is your next concern?
Well, my concern is just the timeframe and disruptive, and so if you can clarify what is disruptive on this, so it's in black and white. I'm okay with, you know, like I said, I'm okay with law and order, efficiency of time and whatnot. If you want to do this, that's okay, you know, but just make it, clarify it, you know? Don't be so vague.
Okay, let me apply the rules right now, okay? Since we have, we've been talking about this thing, let's go for five minutes. Go ahead and restart for her for five minutes to go on this item, and then we can go around for the second time, and then if we continue to, if we need to go further into that, then we need the majority council to decide them. So you have five minutes, go ahead and start, and I'm not going to answer that, or anybody answer that, it's your time.
Right, and you want me to start?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, all I said was basically, please, you know, define what is long period of time leaving the diocese if you want to implement this ordinance, so in that way it's black and white, and then disruptive, you know, manner of disruptive, give example what it is if you want us to enforce it. So as of right now, this is very vague, and like I said, I just feel like this ordinance is not going to help move our city forward like, Mr. Mayor, what you want, you know, our city to do as you mentioned earlier. And with that, you know, it's hard, how do you prove intention? That's another thing that I've been mentioning over and over, is how do you prove intention of someone not going to a council meeting or a closed session meeting? As we know, all of us have responsibility outside of council. We have our job, we have our business, and, you know, things does come up, we have families, emergency does come up. So how do you prove intention of someone, you know, who is not going to a closed session meeting for that reason? So all I'm asking is, like I said again, you know, managing time efficiently is very important to me, I'm okay with that, and I just feel like I'm repeating myself, but if you guys, I just feel like this, this seems really kindergarten-style ordinance, and we are a government entity, and we don't want other people to look at our ordinance and laugh at us. So if you guys want to, you know, make it very concrete, then give us more information because if you bring this to court, just to say, not leave the diocese for a long period of time, what does that mean? You know, and then how do you verify the intention of someone not going to a, for a council meeting or a closed session? How would you, how do you prove their intention? I mean, in court, there's no way of proving it. So all I'm saying is, if we want to move forward with this ordinance, just make it more concrete. It's really vague. So that's all I'm saying, and I yield back.
All right, okay, Vice Mayor Manzo?
I mean, I guess I would say, a lot of these, you know, most cities don't have to do this because most cities, they, everybody that's up here on the diocese knows Robert's Rules of Orders. They study the rules of decorum, the rules of ethics policy, and we abide by them. Here, we don't have that with some of my colleagues, and they choose to pick items just to basically filibuster like what's going on right now. These items are common sense issues. They're here because, these items A through E on this subsection, they're here because that's what's happening in our meetings. One example is intentionally missing closed sessions. This is not about a closed session that's before our meetings, which that has happened, but the one example that I will give you is when we had an important item, a closed session item that we must have heard, and it was important for us to hear, and you, Councilmember Fan West and Councilmember Nam Quang Rains, multiple times during the meeting, intentionally left the building, or went and locked themselves in their office, purposely avoiding the closed session meeting because they knew exactly that they were doing, and they didn't want to, they didn't want to participate in the closed session meeting, they didn't want to actually do their job and attend the closed session meeting. That is one example that I would give, but like I said, a lot of these other cities don't have to be this, you know, this, right, these rules are basically, you can say it's an unwritten rule because it's just common sense. Like I said earlier, leave for a long period of time, you go to the bathroom, whether you're a male, female, you go and as quick as possible, you get right back. That's what it is. So Mayor, these are just, we can sit here and debate these all night, but these are not, these are just common sense rules that are in here. There typically, there shouldn't be any debate because these are, read them, and they're pretty easy to understand and pretty easy to follow.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Manzo.
It's the first meeting, it's the first meeting.
I know that I'm going to make a mistake. I'm going, it's been a year, right, year long, and now I'm going to change anything in one day, so bear with me on that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I apologize to Vice Mayor Manzo. Now, Councilmember Rains?
It's unfortunate it has come to this. I mean, I've been following the meetings for past year, both in person and at home, online, and it's an embarrassment, to say the least. I mean, the very fact that this ordinance has to be written with this explicit language is an embarrassment because they're very common sense things that any resident, any elected official should abide by. I especially like the explicit language in there, and I don't like the fact that a time for restroom break should be defined. I mean, it's common sense, okay, you take three or five minutes, I say, but if you, for example, let's say you ate some bad food, and you had food poisoning, and you have diarrhea that night. I mean, if you're going to take 10 or 15 minutes, that's understandable, right? You know, I mean, the mayor's not going to hold you accountable for that, but it's common sense, you know? You're going to take a five-minute restroom break, even 10 minutes, it's not a big deal. But if you purposely disappear, stay in the restroom, you know, that's uncalled for. I'm willing to support this ordinance, I have no issue. I think it provides structures for our city to move forward, and I disagree with Councilwoman Fan West that it does not provide structure. I think this is the very thing that we need, given the fact that how our meetings have gone in the past year. Let's pass this ordinance and move the city forward.
All right, thank you very much. I said it before, I said it again, I say it again, common sense, common sense, common sense, that's the first thing. The second thing is, if any of us, any one of us here, if we act responsibly, then we don't need any of these, even though it's defined in ordinance, we don't need to look at that, we don't need to go over that. If we are acting responsibly as a council member of this governing body. Now, mentioning about missing the closed session, I can understand if you missed one or even two of a closed session meeting, but I can't understand that you missed seven consecutive closed session meeting. How can you define that? What is the excuse for that? We are here to do the city business, and closed session is very important, that the council member have to be at to resolve the city matter or issues, and sometimes time do not allow. Think about it, seven consecutive closed session that you are missing, then how can we move the city forward? And now you ask us to define how many times that you missed the closed session is, we have to specify here. I don't think we need to. So if we need to go to the second round, then I'm willing to take that.
Well, I want to address what you were talking about because...
Okay, there's a motion to approve, and I will second that. And you want to discuss?
Yeah, I want to just address Mr. Carlos.
Well, we have the policy, so I will allow you for another five minutes.
Okay, thank you, I really appreciate that. Okay, so Vice Mayor Monzo, you talk about the Robert's Rule of Order and the filibuster, and that's correct. The filibuster is exactly what the purpose is supposed to do, is to protect the minority group, to protect their constituent, so they can have a voice for their constituent. And as you know, Nam Quang and I are the majority group in this council, and the thing is that you, this ordinance will violate the filibuster, exactly what you want it to do. And so you're talking about the filibuster, I encourage you guys to look into that, Councilman... talking about the filibuster. I encourage you guys to look into that. Councilman Nguyen, Mark Nguyen, Vice Mayor Monzo, and Mayor Charlie Jing Nguyen, please look at the filibuster. And you guys, with this ordinance, it will violate the filibuster. And the reason why we do what we do, look at Congress, it's even worse. Look at their dialogue. And look at the state senate. Actually, Janet Nguyen did a good job with the filibuster in the state senate. And she utilized that, because she is a minority group in the state of California legislature. And so likewise, with local politics, we are the minority. And when we use a filibuster, it is to protect the voice of our 32,000 people in each of our district. And so we're speaking for them. We don't speak for ourselves when we're on the dais. And so that's the reason. So when this ordinance is purposely, is to violate the filibuster. And with that, I will vote no on it.
Mayor, can I make a quick point?
All right, sure.
See, I think that is, that I've noticed over the last couple of years, is that the lack of understanding of what a city council is. There is no opponents up here. There is no minority, no majority. This is not Congress. This is not the U.S. Senate. This is not the state legislature. This is a city council. This is a nonpartisan position. This is for the community. This is about services, community services. You have total lack of understanding of what you're, we're actually doing up here. There is no Republican, Democrat. There is no, you know, what you're doing. This is supposed to be a nonpartisan.
It's free and what's special.
So that is one of the biggest issues here. There is no majority. There is no minority. There is no opponents up here. We're all supposed to listen to the issues and vote accordingly to represent the community, not to represent, you know, your whoever up here. This is not about representing us, each other up here as a city council. It's about representing the community. This is, that is one of the biggest issues that I see that's happening and causing the majority of the disruptions, is just the lack of understanding of what we're actually doing up here. So let's just move forward, Mayor, and...
Okay.
Thank you.
I know that we have the motion and second on the floor. If the, if that's consensus to go ahead and move for the vote, then is there any objection to that? No, then go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Mayor Nguyen. This is to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance number 2615, entitled an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, California, adding section 2.04.065, rules of decorum for city council members to Title II, administration and personnel of chapter 2.04, City Council of the Westminster Municipal Code, establishing rules of decorum for council members during meetings and finding the ordinance not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Read by title only and wait for the reading of. I'll go ahead and call roll. District One, Councilwoman Fan West.
So before I vote, I want to say, this is destroying the filibuster, which is against the law, government law for local, state, and federal. And number two, when one of the vice mayor talking about no majority, I encourage all the constituent to watch the council meeting, how many times those three over there will vote the same, and we will be the minority. So you'll see. So I encourage you guys to keep watching and see if this is even true. There is a minority in the council here, it's me and Nam Quang, and the majority is them. So you guys will see the votes. Okay? Thank you. So with that, I vote no.
District Three, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carried 3-1.
Next one is 3.5, application for grant funds from Westminster Family Resource Center, and designation of city manager to act as authorized representative. And this item approved by Councilmember West. Now you recognize.
Esther, do you mind expound on this for me briefly?
So this is a requirement from the County of Orange to apply for the next funding cycle for Family Resource Center services. We previously brought this to council in August, when they released the RFP for that solicitation. That solicitation was canceled by the county with no explanation and re-released. So this is just part of that process to apply for this grant again.
Okay. So this grant was applied to the county for the purpose of the Family Resource Center, right?
Correct. We apply for the county grant.
And you guys did get the grant, right?
We...
At that time?
No. We are in a current funding, five-year funding cycle, and then we have to apply again.
Okay. Do you know how much this grant will give the city?
Yes. For Family Resource Center Services, it's $380,000 per year, and that will be for three years, potentially five years, if it's extended. There's additional services that could be allocated to Westminster to serve the region. So in total, we could potentially receive $945,000 per fiscal year.
So it's up to 900?
Yes. It's unlikely that we'll receive that total amount, because some of those services are regional-based, and they will spread that out to the different FRCs in the region. We would likely receive one of the services, either elder adult services, family stabilization, or differential response. So it will range. But it's directly connected to the services that we have to offer contractually if we are granted those funds.
And when we have the city manager approve of this, to take initiative to approve the grant?
Yeah. It grants her authorization to sign off on all the documentation.
Okay. So with that authorization, will she come back to us and show the council where they're allocating those money to certain area?
We will bring, if we are approved by the county, we will bring it back to the council for approval. But it's very specific on what those funds will be allocated to. So we propose a budget to the county that matches the contractual obligations. And upon submitting the RFP, if it's approved, then, then we bring that back to council for approval. So it won't be, it's not a process where we can negotiate at that time different services, because it's very specifically contractually obligated.
But then you'll come back, like you said.
Yes.
Come back and let us know where you guys are going to allocate that money to.
Yes. It's allocated, then. We awarded the funding.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Well, thank you so much for the brief explanation on that. So I motion to move this forward.
I second it. Go ahead and call for the vote.
Thank you. I have a motion made by District One, Councilwoman Fan West, seconded by Mayor Nguyen. I'll go ahead and call roll. This is to adopt a resolution, Resolution 5293, entitled, "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, to Apply as Lead Agency for Grant Funds for the Westminster Family Resource Center, and Designating the City Manager to Act as Authorized Representative." With roll, District One, Councilwoman Fan West.
Fan West, yes.
District Three, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
All right. Next item is 5.1, Consideration of Sponsorship for Midway City Sanitary Districts, Open House. Supposedly that I and Councilmember Mark Nguyen and I recuse for this item. But it's not going to happen tonight, because if I and Councilmember Mark Nguyen recuse at this meeting, then we don't have the quorum to move on. So at this time here, I'd like to go ahead and move this item until the next meeting.
I second it.
All right. So motion to move to the next meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. This is to move Agenda Item 5.1 to the next meeting. I'll go ahead and call roll. District One, Councilwoman Fan West.
Yes.
District Three, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
Thank you. Next is 5.2, Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Maintenance and Service Agreement 2020-44 between the City of Westminster and General Pump Company, Inc., for well pump maintenance and repair at various locations. This is very, so explanatory, so I move to approve.
I'll second it, Mayor. Just have one quick question for our director. Just as far as how long will repair, the repair take?
It depends on what type of repair that needed for. Each wells are differently. Sometimes it takes a couple of months. I think we have Wells R2 that was offline since July, but it will become, come back online by February of this year. And so you're looking at at least six to eight months for, excuse me, for investigations to find out what's going on, and then the work start. And the pump order also take, you know, time too. And the well 126 is offline in Nov, I'm sorry, 125, it was offline in November, and hopefully we're trying to work as soon as possible. Our goal is trying to get these wells back online, so it at least, it wouldn't put any more strain on the remaining wells that we have to, you know, continue putting into the system so we can meet the demand.
All right. Thank you.
We have motion and second on the floor.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Mayor Nguyen, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo. This is to approve the subject Amendment Number Two to the Existing Maintenance Service Agreement 2020-44 with General Pump Company, Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute it on the city's behalf in a form approved by the city attorney. I'll go ahead and call roll. District One, Councilwoman Fan West.
Fan West, yes.
District Three, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
5.3, Award of Contractor for CDBG 24-25 Suite Improvements, Project Number CDBG 24-25.
Motion to approve.
I have, I want to talk about it. So if we can bring Jake back up?
I'm here.
Okay. So Jake, you know, with the corp contracting, is this, have we used them before in the past?
Yes. We have used them multiple times in the past. Actually, not used. They have bid it multiple times in the past, and there was a good contractor that we dealt with. And actually, it was, they have a contract with the residential street last year.
Okay. I see that they're in different cities, and I know other bids as well are in Corona, Lake Forest, Orange, different cities. You know what I would love, and I know the resident would love as well, if we can get contractor who are from the city of Westminster, so we can keep money in the city. But if, say, worst come worst, like this situation, we can't find a contractor in the city of Westminster, if we can allow them or have them kind of hire some of, you know, the worker in the city of Westminster, so we kind of keep some money in the city, if that's a possibility, when you guys do, you know, contractor agreement or whatnot, would you be able to bring that up in the negotiation, so in that way they can hire some of Westminster resident?
I would refer that, you know, legal, because basically on the public contract code, we are not, you know, legally can require them to do that. But Christian might have different takes on, like, you know, what requirement. When we put in a public contract code, we advertise it, we put it on the trade magazines, and these contractor are, they all over the place. Sometimes Westminster doesn't have a, you know, a big contractor that can manage this type of projects. So we cannot force them to be from Westminster or hire somebody from Westminster, because sometimes we don't have the labor force living in Westminster that dealing with this type of contracting work.
Right. And I understand that, you know, sometime the contractor will not be in the city of Westminster. But if we have outsider, like most of our contractor, can we, I guess, city attorney, can we put in the bid if they can hire like maybe 2% from the city of Westminster? Or 1% from the city of Westminster, or something like that?
I can kind of respond to that. There are limitations on it, especially when there's, say, federal or state funds involved. When it's purely local funds, there is, there is room to adopt a bi-local type of program. We'd have to look into it to see. But basically, you do have to follow the public contract code. So we have to go to the lowest responsible bidder. There might be room to, like, give a, I have to, again, I have to look into it, a bonus for someone who's got a local connection. But that's something we'd have to adopt by ordinance, and it would only be applicable to local funds, not to state or federal or county. So that's, that's something we'd have to really examine. It's like a bi-local program.
Okay. So, city attorney, I agree with that. If there is a bonus that we can give to those contractor who are hiring Westminster resident, I think that's a great thing. If we can't, maybe what, instead of the bonus for the contingency fee, like, I mean, I'm okay, contingency is not bad, but maybe we can increase or negotiate with contingency for people to hire our resident in the city of Westminster. I think that's something you guys can work on and negotiate with, because with that contingency, I think we can put some money in there for them to hire Westminster resident.
So the way...
Would that be possible?
I'm afraid that that would not be possible. The current bid is based on the company's representation of who will be on site delivering the services. So we can't impose a labor force that's not their labor force, or else their bid would not be valid.
So then for the Westminster Mall, I know that we mentioned a few times a concern of the council, too, that we want to make sure that they're hiring Westminster resident. And that is for sure, right, that we can implement that there? But why not in this one? Is it, I mean, this part of the city funding, right?
In this one, we don't have anything, and certainly we don't have anything in place. So not applicable to what we have in front of you right now. If we wanted to examine what we could do, that would be something we'd have to look at and then come back to the council and give you the limitations on what is or isn't possible.
Okay. So let me make sure. What you're saying, city attorney, is that you can implement a certain bonus or whatever, right, to the next contract in the future of certain bids? Is that correct?
What typically is involved is, like, you're trying to encourage buying local, and so the city agrees, we're kind of okay paying a little extra in order to hire people locally with purely local funds. So that's, again, something we need to look into and come back and report on, and then craft an ordinance, and then, you know, two readings in 30 days. So right now, that's not in the, not in play. This is a public works contract that's been bid, and by law, we got to, we have to give it to the lowest responsible bidder. That's been identified here as cop contracting. So unless there's a means of finding them irresponsible, you know, or then we would have to go with that. We could reject all bids, or we would have to go with that one.
We are in the first round of discussion, but I know that we have the motion on the floor. I'm calling, I'm asking for if there's a second to this.
I second it.
Okay. Then if we want to continue for second round, then I will allow that. Do you still have more to discuss about this?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Second round, five minutes.
Thank you. And I know that as, you know, council and mayor here, we are concerned to make sure, you know, we can get some of resident, Westminster resident to be hired on some of those bids. And I think it's important, because for us, we want to keep money in our city. It's ideal, right? And I think what the city attorney is saying is, we can encourage that by giving a little bonus or increase certain amount. But moving forward, I know this contract is already, the bid is already done. But I'm talking about moving forward. And I guess you were saying, if we craft in an ordinance, that state, you know, we can give a certain bonus or certain variation for those who hire Westminster residents. Is that correct?
Again, I'd have to, we'd have to look into it and come back to the council on exactly, I don't want to say what is or isn't allowed. But I, in the past, I have adopted a bi-local ordinance.
Okay. If that's the case, can you bring it back to the council here and let us know what your research, because you've done it in the past?
That was many years ago.
Okay.
But, so I'd want to research the changes in the law. But if that's the council's direction, I'd be happy to do that.
Yes, I mean...
If I may add, on certain projects, particularly those that are grant funded, there is a requirement that we use local youth, for example. Conservation Corps is an example.
is an example, and that would be the Orange County Conservation Corps, where they would be brought in to do some clearing and grubbing on a site, and we would pay them to do that, and that would be a part of the bid. And we actually would give more points to the company that is willing to bring them on, right? That's how we get the, it's a requirement of the grant funding. But again, usually that is not the highly technical work, right? In this particular case, we're dealing with live traffic, we're dealing with utilities, so the contractor that bids this is on the hook for anything that goes wrong, and with that bid comes their labor force, so that they can deliver a quality product. And that, that's where it gets a little bit tricky, to be able to bring somebody in to do highly specialized work. Jake, if you have anything else to add on that, please?
You absolutely is correct, because these are very specialized, and you have to have the experience, not just to take any labor force and come in and do this type of work. For, for, say, for street improvements, if you work in concrete, you need to know how to do concrete, finishing forms, all that stuff, paving, you have to be familiar with the asphalt, how to lay it down, how to roll it. So it's not just getting labor from the city, somebody has to be in the workforce for a long time with the experience, then they can do the trade. Or else you're going to get, like, you know, very bad products with somebody with unknown, not like a first time doing, trying to do something. And the contractor typically, they, their reputation, they won't put that online, on the line, if they just hire somebody unskilled, basically, unskilled labor.
Right, and what I'm talking about is not hire unskilled worker in the city of Westminster. What I'm talking about is hire those in the city of Westminster with skills that is fitting for the job. So what I'm saying is, any business, you know, private business, their name is on the line, I agree with that. So of course, they will go and look out and vet those people in the city of Westminster who has the skill for what needs to get done. So all I'm asking and talking about is, those business, all we bring before the business, the contractor, is say, hey, you know, in a ordinance, if we, if you want to do a bid in our city, hire those who are, you know, who are resident Westminster, I don't care where you find, like, how you find it, but find them, and have a, maybe two or three, four people who live in the city of Westminster with the skills for maybe pavement, for electrician, or whatever it is in the city of Westminster, that will utilize them. But I think with the city attorney, you say we can do that.
If I could, I think I can explain this. So this, if you look at page two of the staff report, you have five bids here, so one through five, the lowest one being cop contracting. You can implement a requirement, assuming it's not violating any of the federal or state requirements, let's say you can't do, of a local purchase, and the second bid here is 591,000, which is higher than the 546 for the low bid. You have a requirement that might say, if you're a business located in the city, and your bid is within 5% of the lowest bid, we would award it to that entity. So in that, in that situation, we're paying, you know, $40,000 more, but we find the council has determined that as long as it's within 5%, we will pay that extra money to the qualified contractor that came in second, because they were a local business. So it's kind of like a bonus to maybe bring in more local business, but we're paying more for it, too. So that's what the idea is.
The second round of discussion, is there anything else?
I just want to, these are, I think we're getting off the agenda topic, these are conversations that maybe a council member wants more information, that, you know, get with staff and seek that information, not here at this time, but the DIES. There's not a bad topic, but there is information, questions that could be asked at another time. There's, for example, learn what a community benefit agreement is, public labor agreement is, those are all things that, that we should look into, but not up here at one of this item here, so. So let's, let's talk about that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I just followed the policy that we have two rounds, and at this time here, I don't have anything, I don't know that Councilmember Mark has anything to say.
I have nothing else to say.
Okay, if not, then I would like to get the consensus, if we are okay to, we have motion and second on the floor, I want to get the consensus that we are going to end the discussion at this point.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But the thing is that I wonder if you guys will be okay for, for staff to bring back information of the ordinance that, that Christian was talking about.
You are welcome to do the substantive motion for that, because right now, the motion is to approve at this, right now, to approve for, through the word, the contractor, the lowest responsible bidder. If you want to do something else besides that, you can go ahead and propose the substantive motion.
So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to do a motion later at the end during the council.
No, 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 right now, you can, if you want, you do the substantive motion, and your motion will go first.
I know, but I'm going to do it to the end where we put on the agenda, but go ahead, Adolfo, Assistant Manager, is that okay?
Because the topics are essentially different, I would, I would say that that would be appropriate.
Okay, I'll do that later at the end. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a motion made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by District Three Councilmember Wynn. This is to approve the award of contract to the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of 546,646 to Coop Contracting Corporation, and authorize a 10% contingency in the amount of 54,664.60 for potential change orders, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city in a form approved by the city attorney. I'll go to call roll District One, Councilwoman Fan West.
Fan West, yes.
District Three, Councilmember Wynn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Wynn.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
All right, next is 5.4, appointments to the Westminster Community Foundation. Let me go ahead and take a first cut at this. I totally agree with the, with Kamala when she presented, I think at this time here, for me personally, I don't think I'm ready to appoint anyone to, to the Westminster Community Foundation, WCF, at this time. I don't know Vice Mayor Menzo, or Councilmember Mark, or Councilmember West.
I second you to move this item, table it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have any, anybody, I'm not ready to appoint, Mayor.
Okay. All right, so we have the motion and second to move to defer this item until later.
Thank you. I have a motion made by Mayor Wynn, seconded by District One.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Vice Mayor Menzo has a question.
I just have a question, I don't know, maybe this is a staff question, maybe? I guess, to go into resident, over big, or board member, over big, I should say, that there was a study session that was supposed to be had and never, never came about, is that, what do we do with that? Or do we, should we try to do that?
It was felt, it was felt before, and I don't know whether I want to re-instate on that, but this time, I, I'm not ready to do that.
So it's to the discretion of-
Why don't we take some time, why don't we take some time and think about it? If need to, the next time, we can, we can go ahead and, and propose a study session.
Yeah, we discuss it later.
So, Mr. Mayor, I agree with the resident, like you said, the effectiveness of the Westminster Community Foundation, it's, it's in question. And I, I look, I did a quick search on Facebook, and the public event, you guys aren't consistent, so I noticed the last event was August 2024, so it's not in effect. And then I also want to learn, and also resident that have contacted me, they want to learn to go to the meeting, but there's no agenda on Facebook of when the meeting is for them to attend. And then also, there was brought up to my attention, if there's a way that they can livestream it for the meeting, so the people can know what the foundation is all about to donate to, because on the Facebook page, they only have the link to donate, nothing much about the activity with the Westminster Community Foundation.
But we are not, we're not discussing about this right now, okay? If we, if we, you want to go discuss about this thing, wait until the study session. And if you, if we have the study session, I request that you are the one who proposed that study session, and you need to be there.
I think, I think it's good for us, but the thing is that I agree with them, in order, before we-
At this time, we are not discussing anything. You agreed to-
Yeah, to table this, because we, we have to talk about the close, the study session.
So, you, you agree to table-
Can you please ask one question, since this is the topic and I have a meeting with a board member present?
Okay, go ahead, I allow you.
I do ask that we, like, set this study session to do it sooner rather than later, because we are delinquent in our taxes, and we, the board cannot function, because this council chose to do an 11-member board, and there are currently only four people, so we don't have a quorum, and we can't vote on things to move forward, to close out anything for the previous year. So it is important and imperative that we do this, because we are now facing fines by the city and, and, or not the city, but the state and the IRS. So we can't just ignore this, like, it does need to be handled, like, there are legal implications for the current board members, and I'll be damned if I go to jail for any of you, I don't like you guys that much. I don't, I don't, I'm not even sure I like my own kids that much. So it is important that, like, we put this on as a study session item and fix this, so at bare minimum, we can at least make, the council is the only party that can actually change bylaws, and right now, something at least has to be done, so that the board can close it out and get everything filed as necessary.
Thank you very much. I hear, I hear you, I hear you loud and clear, but I don't want to fall into the same situation as before, that we have the study session set up, and I spend my time, and you guys spend your time here, and it's not going to happen. I want to make sure that we have that concrete, you know, layout, before I can actually go ahead and propose the next study.
City Attorney, I want to verify, are we in jeopardy of the IRS and lawsuit from the Fed on this?
I don't-
State, state and IRS.
Again, I, I'm not representing the, the foundation, I helped with the formation of it, but, but yes, taxes should be filed, and, and there could be implications from that. Although a nonprofit won't have taxes, they still have to file a tax return, and there's state, you know, documents that need to be filed, recognizing who's on the board and things of that nature.
But do we have someone who's filing that on the-
It's the board that needs to do it, and it's your failure to show it for a study session.
So the thing is that, the, Mr. City Attorney, do you guys have a forum last time? Why didn't you guys move forward with Kimberly Ho, Carlos Monzo, and you? I had an emergency, I couldn't be there on time.
There was no Kimberly Ho here, so we didn't have the quorum at the time.
Okay, so that's fine, we can table this, so we can have the study session, but the thing is that I don't understand why the chair and the vice chair of the foundation is not filing that information in the treasure.
All right, at this time here, let's stop, work with staff.
Do we have the chair and vice chair in position?
And let's stop, work with, with, with the members, and then we can, we can work with them to define, define if we need the study session put in place. We have the motion and the second to, to, to put that item, to defer the-
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion made by Mayor Wynn, seconded by District One Councilwoman Fan West. This is to defer to a future meeting date. I'll go to call roll District One, Councilwoman Fan West.
Fan West, yes.
District Three, Councilmember Wynn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Yes.
Mayor Wynn.
Yes.
Motion carried 4-0.
Thank you. Next is status of council appointed at ad hoc committees. I'm going to take a first cut on this, because I understand the issues, and I know that Vice Mayor Menzo also involved in this one, too. There are two, two ad hoc committees that we are talking about today. One is the homeless, homelessness task force, and the other one is, 5.4, 5.5, okay? The other one is council interact policy. Very much the council interact policy is that, because after we assigned to Councilmember Nam Quang Wynn and also Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo, I believe that there was no action taken, am I right about that?
I left it up to Councilmember Wynn, Nam Quang Wynn, to, to give us his availability to conduct this, our meeting, but he was not interested in, or never, never came up with the date, or wasn't interested in performing a date, so no meeting was ever had at all, so.
With that, I assume that there is no issues.
Correct.
If there's no issues, then why we need to have the ad hoc meeting for that?
Exactly.
So I suggest to dissolve, dissolve that, that-
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask Chief? Chief, did you guys have a meeting with Carlos Monzo and Nam Quang regarding the ad hoc committee for the homeless?
I'm talking right now, I'm talking about the council interaction policy. I haven't talked about the homeless, homelessness task force yet. The homelessness task force is only changed the members after we sent, sent you, and then Vice Mayor Carlos Menzo took it over.
Exactly. And you're, you're talking about that you guys haven't had a meeting, and that's false, because Nam Quang and Carlos did have a meeting, and so when you're talking about meetings-
I'm sorry, I have to cut you off right here.
-that Nam Quang didn't show up, that's not true.
I have to cut you off right here, because when, I told you that they don't have the meeting for the council interaction policy, there are two items on this item today.
There's two.
For the homelessness, I don't know about it, but for the council interaction policy, they did not meet.
Well, the interaction policy is the same thing within the homeless task force, because in the homeless task force that you removed me from-
It's not the same thing.
You removed me from, right? Is that correct?
Vice Mayor Menzo, go ahead and explain that.
There's two, we have two items, there's two ad hocs currently open right now. Number one, the first ad hoc committee that was actually voted on early on, I think it was in, early in 2023, was council interaction ad hoc committee to look at the ordinance that has to do with council and staff interaction, that's one ad hoc committee. And that one, Councilmember Nam Quang Wynn is requested, and I think you did as well, and he, and I left it up to him to give, give us his date of availability, and he never had, so I'm assuming, since he never proceeded with it, that he was, that wasn't interested, there was no issue. So like the mayor just said, that ad hoc committee is, should be dissolved, and I agree, needs to be dissolved. The one you're speaking about is ad hoc committee number two, which that is the ad hoc committee that has to deal with the homeless, homelessness issue, that's the second ad hoc committee.
I thought that was the first, the second was the interaction that was created later, right?
And on that one, on, on Mayor, on, since I'm on that, we did meet with the police department, and also our homelessness, homelessness officers, our sergeant, deputy chief, and others, I forgot who else was on there, chief. We did have a meeting, and we discussed the, the differences between quarter number two and quarter number three, and I don't want to really go into the, that right now, I don't really have the time for that, but is I, the purpose of, I want to speak about the mayor, if I can, the purpose of an ad hoc committee, okay? Let me just read this real quick for you guys, is to address a specific issue or a problem that requires focused attention, typically dissolving once, and typically it dissolves once the task has been satisfied, completed. Essentially, an ad hoc committee is not meant to be a permanent, a permanent thing, this is just task-related and as, as needed basis, and, and typically, when there is a-
Can we go second round, because the five minutes-
I'm still talking.
Your rule.
He's, he's talking.
Typically, no, I lost my concentration. So typically, when there is an ad hoc committee, that, those committee members, they're, they're being used as an advisory role to the entire city council, so those, those committee member, ad hoc committee members need to come back and- So those, those committee member, ad hoc committee members need to come back and report to the entire council. And what I saw, and, and I, and I got more information about the previous meetings with the, the other council members on there. Basically, what I saw was, it's just a reporting that are, from what's happening with the homelessness task, homelessness issue. A reporting about, for instance, contacts, shelters, arrests, business contacts, encampments cleanup, those type of things. And what I saw, Mayor, is, is something that, that reporting is very useful, but those two ad hoc committee members cannot, anybody cannot, don't have the authority to, to direct. So that only people that have, they have the authority to, to direct is the entire city council. So what I see is going forward, Mayor, is that, that we ask for that, that information presented to the entire city council, and then we can take it on as a whole body. I don't see the need for an ad hoc committee for this topic, because that, that information eventually, it needs to be presented to the entire city council. So I, like I said earlier, it's not meant to be a permanent thing. It's not meant to have on your, uh, resume, as far as you're on this and you're on that. That's not what it's about. It's about that. So, Mayor,
Thank you.
I suggest that we disband that ad hoc committee as well.
Councilmember West, I, I will recognize you for the second round, but this is my turn right now. And, um, I totally agree with Vice Mayor Manzo.
Why is the time going when I haven't spoke yet?
Then, then, then if, if so, I will go back to you as the first, okay?
You can go first.
That's okay. That's fine. I, I don't see that we need to have it. Initially, when we have this task force due to request of the, the two council members. And we think that, that, you know, we can benefit from that, but to me, I don't see the benefit ever since that we have this ad hoc committee. That's number one. Number two, these, this committee, I mean, ad hoc committee established at the time that we did not join forces with the city of Phan Valley and the city of Gondroff. And now we are in full force with those two cities, and we have the, the navigation center up and running. I think, I totally agree with you that we, we don't need to have specific ad hoc committee to, to represent us in this matter. But overall, each and every one of us from this governing body need to understand, need to, to know the, the issues from our police department to, to act upon that. So I totally with you on that. If you, if you are making a motion, then I will second you on that.
Yes, Mayor, the motion would be to disband both, both current ad hoc committees at this time.
I second that. Now, Councilmember Mark Nguyen, do you have anything to add?
It seems, it seems to me that there's no need for these two ad hoc committees, so I'm fine with dissolving them.
Okay, thanks. Now I go back to you for the first round.
Okay, so, um, I think as we have issue with homelessness and plight in the city of Westminster, and it's on the rise as we all know it, and we see it daily when we go to grocery store, when we go take our kids, you know, out and about to different activities. I do see it, and resident in the city of Westminster and District One and other district has voiced their opinion regarding the plight and the homelessness in our city of Westminster. And I think it's compassionate to have the council to be responsible in going to meetings with the chief of police and the homeless liaison. So that way, they, maybe what is missing is reporting back to the, their district or reporting back on the dais here of what study they find out or, or implement, you know, things that they can do to implement to help reduce the homelessness in our city. If they can find those research and return back to the public and tell them what they're doing, the process of how we can reduce homelessness and plight in our city. And I think this is a valuable ad hoc committee, but it just may be what we need is to have those council who are on it, the ad hoc committee, to come back to the public and tell us what research they've done, what have they find out, and how they can help us reduce homelessness and plight in our city. And with that, I, I, I think it's important. I just think we have to tweak it a little bit and accountability. So I think the public would appreciate that and would respect that, those information and, and those findings. So I personally think we should keep it, but tweak it a little bit, and have you, Vice Mayor Manzo and Nam Quang to come back with the information for us. I would really love that, to hear about it.
Okay, we're going for the second round. If you have anything to say.
Yes, Mayor, um, yes, that was the intention, but for the year and a half, whatever long it was, I don't ever remember getting a report of, from that ad hoc committee. I attended the one, and the one, I know that's what I, that was my determination, was that this information that was presented to that ad hoc committee needs to be presented to the entire city council. That's, I have my, you know, so that's, I agree with, we have that issue. Homelessness is a big topic in our community, but we as a council would take that information in as a whole, and, and then we can recommend, or if the chief and his staff have recommendations for us, then we would hear those recommendations as a, as a body, and, and act, and make a determination at that point. But, like I said, we can do here as a, as a council. So that is, that is what I think that we can do, we should do. We're not saying that the homelessness is not an issue. Yes, it's a major issue. It's a big issue all across our city and, and all cities, not just Westminster. But I think that is the proper way to handle it, is, is every, we can decide, Mayor, you know, you want it quarterly, or whatever, however you want to
That's what I-
Get a report from our, our chief.
Yeah, before I ask, right, I, I understand.
So that's, that is what I see what we should be doing. And we don't need an ad hoc right now.
Right. Before I ask, Councilmember Mark, I want to, it's my turn right now. Go ahead and start the five. I agree with you that we need to dissolve the, the homeless task force, because it's, it's no good for us. But at the same time, all council members on this governing body need to understand and need to, to, you know, resolve, I mean, they need to take into consideration of the homelessness in our city. With that, if you are okay to amend your, um, motion, I'd like to, number one, dissolve this, uh, this home, both ad hoc committees, but for the homelessness task force, I would like to do the same thing as the public safety. Every three months, I ask the, the police chief to come back and present us the status of that quarterly. How are we doing on the homeless? Is there any improvement, or is, is this getting worse than the council as a whole? We can decide on that.
Yeah, I, I agree. So that is part of my mandate as well.
Okay, I second that. Councilmember Mark Nguyen, do you have anything to add?
So how often do we have a, a report from city staff on the homeless?
Quarterly.
Police chief.
Quarterly, okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay, you want to go for a second round, or you're done?
Thank you. I appreciate that. So the reason why I think this is so important is when I sat on the ad hoc committee, and when we meet, there are certain things that they talk to us about regarding the homelessness and what they're doing to help fix this. Like, for example, with crimes in our city, they're trying to work with the court here to allow them to work where we can hold them a little longer than within 24 hours. That's something we can, we discuss as a council before we bring it to the public. So I think it's important for something like that, or, you know, partnering up with McDonald's or Burger King to help with the food when the inmate is there, because we have to feed them. So stuff like that, that we talk with in ad hoc committee, which I think is very important when the time is right for us to say that and speak about that to the public, to know what we're doing to help the homeless situation, and what group organization we're partnering up with to help with the food costs for those who are in, in the, our prison for the period of time. So likewise, you know, or what we're doing to, to create a special force to target certain group in our city that has high crimes activity. That's what our law enforcement are working on. And that's why it's very important for us to have that special force to inform you guys when the time is right regarding what we're doing when we look at the map to see where high crimes are and what we're forming this special task force to help those areas. So it's very important to, to have the council to have eyes on this homeless situation, to have ears, and then maybe inform the council or inform the public when the time is right to unleash those information. So that's all I'm saying. I think it's very important to have the council here to be in touch with our homeless situation and in touch with what our law enforcement is doing to help the resident and the businesses in the city of Westminster. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think, I don't mind if you guys get rid of the council into action policy, but maybe keep the homeless task force so Vice Mayor Carlos Monzo can still go with Nam Quang to get information like this, to be informed, to be in touch with what the Westminster PD is doing to help our resident businesses and the homeless in our city. Because they're working on mental illness as well, you know, and that is important. And I, it's very vital for the council to have a firsthand experience, so in that way, they can respond back to the public. And I think this ad hoc committee is very crucial to have in the city of Westminster regarding the rise in homelessness, crime, and mental illness. So with that, I yield back.
Alright, thank you very much. I, I know that we have this task force for almost two years, and it's nothing happened. So what, what, what good is it to go into for another two years? And with, with the request for quarterly update from our police chief, by no means that, by all means that, you know, you, as, as you see, if the, the problem aggress, then you can always bring it to us. There doesn't have to be a quarterly, but minimum quarterly report is needed for the council to, to be updated on, on, on those things. So at this time here, we have the motion and second on the floor, unless you want to have a, a substitute motion. Okay, okay, then go ahead and call the police.
I, I know what the vote is like, so we can move forward to just do the votes.
I have a motion made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Mayor Nguyen. This is to disband both current ad hoc committees and direct staff to present quarterly reports to the city council regarding homelessness. I'll go to call roll, District One Councilwoman Fan West.
It is so crucial to have a pause, have a heart, a pause on this homeless situation, especially we have the rise in the homeless situation, mental illness and crimes. And I think the ad hoc committee is very important for the council to have a, a pause on it and a-
We already discussed about that. We, we hear you loud and clear, so go ahead and vote.
Yes, so I want to briefly make that statement. And for my reason is, I think how important it is, I'm going to vote no on this, because I think the council should know firsthand
Alright, thank you.
What the homeless situation is happening.
Next.
District Three Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
3-1, motion carried.
Alright, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to move on to oral communications from non-agenda items. So, yeah, thank you. So, um, Madame Clerk, will you go ahead and read the instruction into the record, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a yellow speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the city council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time, state your name and city of residence for the record. Our first speaker is Michael Varengia, followed by Donald Link. Thank you. Couple items, actually, more than a couple of items I'd like to address. Ms. Fan West feels that it was babysitting these decorum rules that you're putting out here. And that's partially true, because we have two council members who act like a couple of five-year-olds. As a matter of fact, I'd like to get my eight-year-old grandson down here. Maybe he could take one of their places. He would obviously know what he was supposed to do. And you just proved to me why everything gets talked to death. And we have a council member sitting down there who wants to have the last word on everything. She's standing here wanting to, or sitting there, I should say, talking about the homeless task force. You want to get in on that, put yourself through the police academy, get hired by Westminster PD, go through field training, and do the workout on the street like everybody that's ever worn a law enforcement or fire uniform has done. Don't sit here and inject yourself into their business. They know what they're doing. You obviously don't, because you've proved it here time and again. Also, you're talking about missing closed session. Oh, it, it could be something? How many times did you and Nam Quan stand outside this council chamber in a quote, "press conference", while you spun all kinds of BS notions to Vietnamese-speaking people hoping that they would vote you two into another office? It didn't work. This gentleman sitting up here is a good proof of that, and so is Councilmember Manzo, I should say Vice Mayor Manzo. Also, there is no filibuster on a city council. You're not a Republican, you're not a Democrat, you're a nonpartisan. There's no filibuster. You keep trying to make it filibuster. And the mayor is a lot nicer than I would be. I'd cut it off at two five-minute speeches, because you obviously like to run on and on to hear yourself talk. So, please, do us all a favor, do what you're supposed to do, and let it go at that. You're not going to promote yourself up here anymore, because everybody's realized what a waste of time you and your partner are. Thank you. Our next speaker is Donald Link, followed by Camila Overbeek.
Regarding what are the intentions of what the decorum item means, when someone has the abs, has been absent from the dais and closed meetings, the reasonable man theory, also known as the reasonable man standard, is a legal concept that compares the defendant's actions with those of a hypothetical person who would act reasonably in a similar situation. The reasonable person is a legal action that courts use to judge the conduct of others. Going on and on and asking clarifying of past clarifications of subjective ideas is not reasonable. It's called hijacking meetings for pure objective motives. And we all know what your motives are. As we all are born, we're, we're born at night, or in the morning, or in afternoon, or just, or last night. Just not last night, and not last morning, and not, not last afternoon. We are all older than kindergartners. Definitions of common sense behavior is reasonable behavior, no more, no less. The connection between filibuster and Robert's Rules of Orders is interesting, given the word filibuster does not appear in Robert's Rules of Orders nearly, in the nearly revised edition, not even once in over 700 pages. That's because filibuster is a legislative concept. This is a nonpartisan legislative body and not a minority-majority legislative body. If you want to be in the majority, join the majority and work with what your district wants done, and not what you perceive wants done. Pontification is a noun that means pompous, dogmatic speech. It really does not impress- It really does not impress or your intended audience, whatever that may be. Also, I do not consent to private filming of myself by council members. I do consent to being filmed by Channel Three, the City Filming Institute. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Camila Overbeek, followed by Davora Mariscal.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mr. Mayor, I would like to say thank you for allowing me to step forward and just reiterate to you earlier. I know that that was out of normal protocol, but it is appreciated. Also, I would like to say that for a long, for the majority of my life, I've subscribed to the concept that there is no such thing as a stupid question. And tonight, my belief system was proven wrong by Councilmember Fan West, because it was actually painful to sit here as an intelligent person and listen to her ask questions that could have easily been answered by Googling or reading a staff report before showing up to a meeting. And I'm just going to point this out for you, Councilmember Fan West. The entire reason that 3.4 was implemented and that ordinance is because of your behavior tonight. I don't know if you were like being willfully obtuse or if you were really just that low on the intelligence scale. Because the level of questions that you asked and the amount of questions that you asked, when you know damn well why it is and what reasonable is, and I'm going to say this because you brought up the fact that you're a woman and sometimes things happen, so am I, and it doesn't take 15 minutes to change a tampon, and if that's a problem for you, get yourself a Diva cup. Because you're wasting taxpayer money and resources, and this meeting could have ended an hour ago if you would have had a modicum of respect and used your brain. I don't know if your brain cells are fighting, but good God, woman. Councilmember Nguyen, please stick around. It's a pleasure to have you, and thank you.
Our next speaker is Davora Mariscal, followed by Tammy Hamel.
Good evening, Davora Mariscal, Westminster. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but a few things came to mind, so here I am. And I would like to say congratulations to our police officers and to our police chief. I was attacked at a homeless encampment on Westminster and Hoover by, I'm not going to say what the dog was, but an off-leash dog that could have killed one of my three dogs. And they were able to disband that homeless encampment after a little bit of time. So that is good. Congratulations on the last meeting that we had, closing out the end of the year. I know, Councilmember Nguyen, you were not here yet, but it was great. We got a lot of things done. It was peaceful. Good job. Sad to say, it's not the same tonight. Common sense, be on time. Yes, I understand that there are times when you're going to be a little bit late, but not the majority of the time. Not missing meetings because you're doing press conferences instead. When two districts, District One and District Four, leave the meeting at the same time, perception is reality, extremely disrespectful to the council, to the city staff, to the residents who come here and try to help make things better. As far as there being a majority, I would say yes, we have three council members that have worked really hard to do the best for the city and not spending a lot of time asking questions that could have been addressed by reading the notes and everything that's submitted to the council members before that. Regarding getting Westminster residents to work for a specific contractor, there is something called prevailing wage. It suggests that you look it up. It is government contracts. It does require additional expenses, which that would be great for the people that might be working for those contractors, but it's not great for the city because they have to do additional funding for their health insurance benefits, for their wages. It's great for those people, but you can't hold an employer to something like that. And that's for large contracts, not for something like what we have here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tammy Hamel, followed by Janet Viveros.
Good evening, Tammy Hamel, Westminster resident, District One. One of the first things I wrote down was kind of commenting on what someone else said, and I've asked her this on her Facebook page, is if she is recording, I guess it's a legal question, or maybe a city policy question, if she is recording up here as a council member and before she was speaking and making comments about people, I assume, who were up here speaking, does she not have to share that with constituents? She's all about transparency. If she's posting something as an official council member, because it's not on her Facebook page, because I'm on that, because she can't delete anybody from that or block anybody. But if she's doing this as councilwoman, does she not have to tell her constituents where those videos are? What if she's defaming people? What if she's threatening people? What if she's telling some of her followers to threaten people? Does she not have to share that information? She's recording us. She keeps changing it to focus on people in the audience, people up here. She needs to be called out on that, and she needs to be told that she has to share that, where that link is, so that we can see what she's doing and what she's saying. It's a little ridiculous that she talks about transparency. And I'm looking at you because you, maybe a legal question, I don't know. But if you want to research that, as she would ask you to do, she needs to be told that she needs to share it. So that we can't, yeah, well, she won't show up to that anyway, but. That was one question I had about her going on about the ad hoc homeless thing committee. First of all, does Nam Quan even show up to those? Like, she wants to push for him to go to these meetings and keep it alive, but I kind of doubt he even shows up. I only have a little bit of time left, but pretty much is what everyone else said. Amy, you know what you're doing. You're distracting, you're playing games. If you don't have the common sense or the knowledge to know what these terms mean about being disruptive, time away, then you are either just literally too stupid or too inexperienced to be in that seat. All you're doing is wasting time, you're distracting from city business. I even wonder if him being, if him being absent was on purpose so that you guys could not have a quorum to vote on that agenda item, because that's what they've done before. On purpose, you missed closed sessions. What was it, seven? Because you were out there having press conferences, telling lies. And I have a feeling what she's going to start doing is saying, oh, Carlos, you were gone for 10 minutes, I'm going to call you out. She's going to start trying to use that policy against you guys. So please don't let her do it. And before my time is up, I missed the other meetings that, you know, you guys were sworn in. I'm so glad you're in that seat. I'm so glad you got reelected. You're doing good. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janet Viveros, followed by Terry Reins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and respected board. My name is Janet, and I was a Westminster City resident for 31 years of my life, up until very recently, last year, that I had to move out of the city boundaries. All of my immediate family members, my parents, siblings, and their spouses and children continue to reside in this beautiful city. I attended Westminster School District, graduated from Westminster High School. Sorry. And three out of my five siblings, including myself, worked as educators for Westminster School District. I stayed local. I graduated from Golden West College, and then I moved on to UC Irvine. I've always been involved in my community through my education and my career years. My four younger siblings would joke with me and tell me to run for mayor for Westminster City when we were younger. This year, I finally built the courage to apply for one of the committees. Eventually, my goal is to become a council member and move back to Westminster City. But for now, I just want to be part of a commission. I began to complete the application until I got to the proof of residency section. I respectfully request to please reconsider this requirement as one day, a one near day in the near future, I hope to have the opportunity to be part of the community that I grew up in, or if there is some type of exception, to please tell me where I could find more information regarding that. I am confident I can bring more productive input to the commission. I want to invest my time and make a greater and more positive impact to the city. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Terry Reins.
Happy New Year. Prayers for those affected by the wildfires in LA County. Who is going to the Mayor and Councilmember Academy this month in Garden Grove? None of the attendees should expect the city to pay for hotel rooms since this event is less than six miles away. Registration is $675 each. Hotel cost would be $169 per night plus tax and fees. Amy and Nam Quan, if you go, for the love of God, pay attention, attend all the sessions, and provide a detailed AB 123 report at the first February meeting. I'm confident the rest of you will do that. Amy, you've missed five of nine regular vector control board meetings last year. Per the website, your term on that board expired on Monday. And I had a little something, something here for it, but I can't find it. So anyway, no more board appointments for you. Nam Quan, not here, you stated everyone would be crying like babies after this election. Huh, who's crying now? Charlie Beat your ass, receiving 28% of the vote versus your pathetic 5%. Now that I do have some. Kind of sounds funny tonight, doesn't it? And sometimes it sounds just like that. Nam Quan seems to be aimlessly traveling a lot lately, seemingly running away from something or running to find something, not sure which. It's time to throw this insult of his against Charlie right back at him. Now, sure, you know, the translation may not be perfect, but it's close enough. Thank you, staff, for a wonderful swearing-in ceremony at December 11th at the Rose Center Theater. Not only did we receive an early Christmas present, when the city filed a court action against Amy and Nam Quan, we received more presents right before and right after that beautiful swearing-in ceremony.
December 10th, 2024, 8:05 PM. Amy Fan West, you've been served. December 12th, 2024, 10 AM. Nam Quan Nguyen, you've been served. Happy New Year, Westminster. Now again, the translation may not be perfect, close enough.
I checked the court's website today, and guess what I found, or should say what I didn't find? No attorney on record for Amy or Nam Quan, the defendants, no answer filed by Amy or Nam Quan, the defendants, and the deadline for those violences is tomorrow and Saturday, respectively. So you know what? I'll see you all on May 6th.
Mayor, that concludes our oral comments.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have a brief.
Yes, okay. Yes, you recognize.
For one of the, you know, residents talking about go to academy and not, you know, join the ad hoc committee, that's ridiculous. We are elected official. If I wanted to be a police officer, I would do that, but I'm elected official, and my job is to have a touch on the cause of the homelessness, crime, and mental illness in our city, and that's my job. And that's what my constituent expect of me and not anything less. So for whoever that person said, make that statement, that's false. And then also, you know, for, you know, some, another resident asked about the motives of me and Nam Quan, you know, we have, you know, there's times we can't make it the same for you guys, when the mayor called for cancel the meeting in November because you guys are on vacation. We didn't have a quorum. So Carlos Monzo and Kimberly Ho as well wasn't there, but we were available in November. But you guys were on vacation, so that's fine. You know, there's time that you guys need to take a break. I'm okay with that. So determine someone's motive for not having a council meeting is kind of far-fetched there. Now, for a, you know, the thing is that most, some of you guys here, most of you guys here, we all know, is the same rodeo. You guys say the same thing. Most of you guys don't even live in my district, except for maybe one or two. You guys live in Carlos Monzo, Mark Nguyen district. And so it's interesting that you guys are talking as if you live in my district and you are the voice of my district. I represent 32,000 people in District One, and I don't speak for myself. I know what they want. They email me, and they call me, and they tell me what they want, and I know what they want. They want us to fix the homelessness, the plight, the homeless sleeping on top of some of their roofs, the parking, you know, in Westminster Village, you know, certain, you know, flat house and whatnot. Or, you know, homes that are, you know, converting into certain things. So I know what their concerns are, and so that's what I'm fighting for, and I will continue to fight to be their voice. And that's what I was elected to do. So I have two more years left, and that's what I will faithfully do, to fight to represent the voice of those who elected me. And so you will never see that I won't do that. I will continue to fight for the minority group, those who are taking advantage or being bullied. I will fight for them, and that's what I'm here for. And I don't care if I'm the only one. If you guys want to silence me, that's fine. That's a few of you guys. I represent 32,000 people.
We got you.
So, you know, for the thing is with the recording, city attorney, I know, you know, we have freedom of expression, and I do put this on, you know, my Facebook. And the thing is that this is a public forum. You guys have recording here. We can get this recording as well. It's the same thing. My recording is the same as the city recording. It's all right here on the city website. So if those who want to see the council meeting or go see it on my page, it's fine. Facebook is the same concept, it's public, and freedom of expression is very important to each one of us, from the council, mayor, and also the constituent. And, you know, for those of you who think I just ask question for disruptive, you know, I mean, we need verification. It's just really vague. All I ask is just, you know, clarification. And for my job is to ask all the question I can for my district that I represent, and I will continue to do that. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I yield back.
Thank you very much. Next, well, I, I'm sorry, we need to move on. I want to thank you, each and every one of you, for coming out and express your opinions once again, either as an agenda item or non-agenda items. So at this time, I would like to move on with the comments and requests for agenda items from the city council and agency member, including reporting back to the council and residents as an AB 1234, if you are attending any outside meeting. So let me start with Vice Mayor Manzo.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to, I hope everyone had a nice Christmas and a new year. We would enjoy that. And, you know, glad to have you back, glad to be back. The next thing I want to just say is, you know, as you guys, a lot of you may know that the fires, the current, the most recent fires, they're affecting, you know, our neighbors, our community up north. You know, my heart goes out to them, and everybody affected, you know, their worlds got turned upside down and just, you know, keep them in our hearts and hope that they can recover. I hope that everybody's safe out there. And also, I want to make sure we thank our first responders. They're doing the best they can out there to try to save as many, as much of the property as possible and keep, mainly save lives. That's the most important. So thank you for our first responders, our chief, and out there. So thank you for our first responders, the chief, and out there. I'm sure that some of our OCFA, they're out there assisting as much as they can. So that's all I got at this time. I don't have any agenda items requests. Just thank you, glad to be back, staff. Thank you for what you do. Hopefully, you guys had a nice... Unfortunately, a lot of our, members of our staff were, didn't enjoy the holidays as much as others. There were, some of them got ill. So I'm sorry about that, but I'm glad you're feeling a lot better. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I want to thank Vice Mayor Menzel for taking more responsibility. Congratulations to you, but at the same time, there's more responsibility to that. And you were willing to take that on, and I'm pretty sure that we can move this city forward for this year. Appreciate for your dedication and effort there. Next, I would like to move to the councilmember West for District One.
Okay, so, you know, first and foremost, I really appreciate. Janet, thank you so much for coming to share your interest in giving back to the city. It's really rare for us to have people who want to show that interest to give back, even though you no longer live in the city of Westminster, but you want to give back. And I know that we have rules where only city resident Westminster gets to be on commission, planning, traffic, and whatnot. But we have the Westminster Community Foundation. Once we have the study, if you want to, I would love to appoint you onto it. And if you want to give back in that way, of how the purpose of the foundation is to fundraise for the TED Parade, which is huge in our city, but also youth mentorship, homelessness, and now veteran and senior citizen. So I think that might fit, you know, your values and criteria. I think that'll be great for you, and you can give back. And I think you're a great asset to our city in the Westminster Community Foundation. Now, I just want to mention to some of you guys, I guess you don't know, but Councilman Nam Quang got COVID, and he has shortness of breath. And he just let me know that he couldn't be here earlier today. He tried to. But with shortness of breath, it's really important to take good care of you. I mean, you have your two lungs. You can't breathe. I mean, it's very important. Now, I want to wish everyone, like my colleague, a happy new year. 2025 is exciting time. I know that it's a new start for everyone, new start for our own life, new start for the council, new start for the city of Westminster. And I think it's important for us to see potential in the city of Westminster and what we can do together to better the resident, have compassion on the homeless, mental illness, and also, you know, reduce crimes in the city of Westminster. And I thank you for our law enforcement, for doing such an amazing job taking care of that issue. You guys are kind of like Batman undercover in a way, so I really thank you for that. That's a great way analogy for me to think of you guys. And then for our fire department as well, thank you for putting out the fire, especially what's happening right now. I know that you were sent to different locations in LA Riverside to help to reduce that fire spread. But I thank you for your bravery, your courage. It is important, men in uniform like you guys, fire and police, you guys are our hands and feet and our brave soldier without a cape. So thank you. I really appreciate that. And then, you know, of course, I look forward to, you know, our, all of us to finish our, I guess, sexual harassment and the training, AB whatever, 123, coming up at our conference at the, close to the end of this month. And we will report back on what we've learned and how we can better our city, but also how we can bring back local control government to the city of Westminster and the residents that lives here and the businesses in the city of Westminster. So 2025, I am very excited from federal, nationally. You know, I think our nation will transform and change. And like I said, on my, I have my mug. It says, "Standing Together, United and Free." And it's so important. On the other side, I couldn't move my, 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 my video. But on the other side of my mug, it says, "Standing Strong, United and Free." And I think, like the United States of America, united we stand, divided we will fall. And I think the same for the city of Westminster. I know we have differences, you know, and different ideas, how to get to the same location, but we just have different ideas and different values, and it's okay. It's important to have different ideas because if everyone's like Amy, then what's the purpose of dialogue? So that's why I love the fact that we have variety of people and ideas in the city of Westminster. And I'm open to any dialogue of how we can improve the city of Westminster, the homeless, the public safety, to crimes, mental illness, to our businesses in the city or planning, getting approval of different licenses in our city. I am more than open to hear your guys' ideas and how we can move the city forward and for our businesses so we can generate tax revenue into the city of Westminster. So thank you so much for putting your trust, District One, and anyone else in me to continue to fight for your voice and defend our family, our freedom, and our way of life. Thank you so much. God bless you, and cheers to 2025.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Amy Van West. Next is Councilmember Mark Wen.
Once again, Happy New Year. Thank you for, to staff for setting up the swearing-in ceremony. It was quite beautiful. And thank you to all you who have attended and to all the supporters who have attended the ceremony. I was quite humbled and touched by all the support. FYI, I attended the AmHats luncheon a couple of weeks ago. And guess what? I was a grand prize winner. So I won $1,500, but I can't take the money. So I'm going to donate it to the Westminster Community Foundation, not Terry Ray.
But specifically to Ted Parade?
Yes, specifically to the TED Parade. So I will do the paperwork to get that going. But thank you again for being here and for your patience.
All right, chatting along with Councilmember Mark Wen. I was at that, at that event. It was Matt's luncheon to the elected official. And we have Vice Mayor Menzel, myself, and Councilmember Mark Wen. All three of us there, but two of us win the prize. They have about, you know, eight drawings, but the city of Westminster get two. So I got the one with $750. And at first, I was thinking of giving it to another organization, but at the same time, I think that I have to compete with Mark here, so... So I want to donate this one to WCF. With $750, the prize that I got, I already talked to Matt, and they're okay with that. And this is specifically going to the TED Parade. $750 is only half of $1,500 that Mark has, right? So I was thinking that, hey, a couple of years ago, I won the prize there too, but I haven't used it. So I called him up. I said, well, I have the $500 prize that I, in 2019, I haven't used it, so can I use it now? So they said, yes. So I actually have $750 and then $500. Total, I have $1,250. That's almost close to $1,500, all going to the WCF and to the TED Parade. Thank you for that. So the next thing is that several of you know that at the last meeting in 2024, we have Vice Mayor at the time, Vice Mayor Hall, myself, and Councilmember Menzel at the time. We were able to pass the item that we would like to thank our seniors and also the veterans. And we want to appreciate them, you know, for the gift card, the grocery card with $150. So I want to make sure that you know that we already passed that item, Major, Major anniversary pass item. Definitely, we will have that passing out to needed people or to seniors. It's just that right now, I know, staff working on it, and we, they plan to have it at the end of January or it's going to be at the beginning of February. So if you know the people who live in the city of Westminster, 65 or older, or or the veterans, veteran doesn't have to be 65, any age, if you are a veteran. As long as you prove that you're a veteran, then you qualify for that too. It's just a small token that I think the city of Westminster, from the council, from the staff, from the city of Westminster, we would like to thank and appreciate, and this is just a gift of the beginning of the year, to say appreciation for all that you do for the city of Westminster. The next thing is that I would like to end this meeting in a sadness that I want to adjourn this meeting with in memory of our OCFA firefighter, Kevin Skinner, who served as our South County area, passed away while fighting a blaze in Laguna Niguel. So our thoughts and prayers are with his family and with our brothers and sisters of the OCFA. So with that, I would like to wish you a happy new year. And I'd like to adjourn the meeting, and we'll see you on Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.